Well, good afternoon. We will get started with our study session today. We have Dr. Susana Reyes here with us. She's going to go over the long-term facilities planning process, I think. And our goal as a board is just to make sure when we're done here that we are all on the same page, that they have an understanding of what we expect as a board. And so that's kind of our goal here is to make sure that our ideas are aligned. Is that fair enough, Dr. Reyes?
I think so. Unless Superintendent Whitney has anything to add.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Thanks. I'm waiting for one more handout.
Okay.
Here we are.
Looks like it's coming.
Okay. So you recall back in December of 2016, I believe. You might remember that you went through a process to develop operational expectations for facilities. Does this look familiar? So that's now, what, two years ago? And out of that work, the Community Builders Group was formed later that year in spring of 2017. And the goal of the Community Builders Group was to provide a way for meaningful participation by community in this work. And so they've been meeting for the last couple of years now, working through, learning about our facilities, reviewing information and data to kind of get where we are today. And so they've been providing a lot of information in that regard and support and assistance in the work. This is the long-term facilities management planning timeline that we've been working under. The white checkmarks off to the right in some of those sections reflect a certain level of completion of the work as it relates to those components. Let's see. So this is one of the components of what a long-term facilities management plan would have, which would be somewhat of a standard or guidelines for school size. And the Community Builders Group reviewed information and data and engaged in conversation, discussion, and worked through a process to come to a recommendation for what would be appropriate school sizes for the Pasco School District at each level. And this information or this recommendation was presented to you this past October. And this slide shows the school size range for each level as recommended by the group. And in October, the Community Builders Group also developed recommendations for school site size ranges for each level. And then this was presented as well and shows the range of site size for schools at each level. So those are, the site size and school size are two of the components of a facilities plan. And the other part of the work was, had to do with us coming together to really look at what our priorities are based on what the needs are of the district. And as you know, and we all know in Pasco, one of the greatest needs is addressing our capacity needs with regard to brick and mortar schools. And so using that, in addition to all of the rest of the information that the group had poured over the last few months, beginning in November, the smaller technical work group met and developed an initial list of priorities. And then that work was shared with the larger Community Builders Group. They further developed the list. And it was a long list of brainstormed ideas. And then we went through a process to actually layer them in a first, you know, priority list, and then a second and a third. And this is the list that would provide you with information as to what would be the most, some of the most important projects that we really need to be looking at for the district. And as you can see, our first item there on the list is a high school. And each person in the group was able to share their perspective as to the level of importance and the need by using a dotting process. So everybody got three dots and they were able to designate the different projects accordingly. This was the second list of prioritization, which includes some of the smaller projects that we might perhaps look at potentially placing in different bond scenarios. But again, they're projects that are important and needed. They just weren't part of that first initial highest level of priority. And this was the second list, or the third list, of priorities that the group went through to designate as important for the district to be looking at. And the entire list, the three lists, are not, certainly not exhaustive, and they're also not, in terms of the order, they can certainly, you know, we can go through additional conversation and analysis and maybe reorder some. But they are, they do give us a place to start, and they are reflective of what we understand to be the needs in the district. They were really a result of brainstorming and using the data and information that the group reviewed. And as we continue, we would go through an additional process to really review and place these along a continuum of projects based on further analysis and then projected funds availability. So this is an initial start to really prioritizing what it is that our district needs when it comes to district-wide facilities, not just schools, but other operational type of needs. So on the timeline that I showed earlier, one of the other components is really looking into our financial status as a district in terms of debt, bond debt, and future bonding capacity. And we enlisted the support of Northwest Municipal Advisors. And Scott Bauer is here with us this evening and will be sharing the next three, the information on the next three slides with you, along with Randy Nunnamaker, who's here, who can provide some insight into the slide related to the projects. And what we did as a group, we had Scott Bauer join the Community Builders Group in December, or in November, for an initial meeting to just kind of give us an initial review of where we are as a district. The group shared ideas and thoughts about what would be some potential projects out into 10 to 15 years that would address some of our needs and so forth. And we actually went, have gone through a few scenarios. And then Scott also provided you with an initial presentation, I believe in December, as well. And so what Scott will share this afternoon is a scenario that you have in front of you also on paper, as well as the related projects that would go with each of these potential bonds out into 2032. So it's an initial, long-term facilities projects timeline for you to kind of take a look at and maybe have some discussion about. And once Scott shares the information, then you'll have an opportunity to discuss, and then I'll come back with you to help us through the rest of the conversation. So Scott.
Okay. See, I think I'll move to the side here, see if I can use the laser. Oh, good. So thank you very much for having me here tonight. So just to, I guess, get reoriented, I know you've seen a chart a little bit like this, but let's go through some of the basics of what's the chart's showing us, and then we can go into some of the details of it. So the bars that you see here, the lower bars, which are supposed to show up in green, are your levy rate. It's the levy dollars that are brought in. So, and essentially this slope tracks the levy dollars that are brought in at a $1.50 levy rate. On top of that, in kind of a light red, is your existing bond debt. So in 2018, if we, you know, stack all those up together, in total, the dollars levied in the district for just Pasco School District was about $40 million, or a levy rate of 5.95. So along this side, we have the dollars. Along this side, we have the levy rate. And this dotted line here that you see is the combined levy rate of, again, your EPNO and the bonds. So 2018 levy rate of 5.95. This year, you've come down to a 3.95. And then, given some of the assumptions that we're putting into it, maybe I'll go into that next. So we're assuming for the next couple of years that your AV will grow at 6%. Earlier, we were assuming 3%, which was the assumption made during your last set of bonds. We've upped that for just the first couple of years, namely because most recently, your AV has grown at a much greater rate than 6%. Randy took a look at the past 10, 20, and 30 years, and in every, for the past 30 years, you've been growing at over 6%. So we thought it was safe to go with 6% for a couple of years, and then we scale that down to an assumption of then 3% going out. But again, that's an assumption. So again, based on a 6% growth, and now new issuance of debt, the AV drops down to a 3.85. And then we start to layer in the projects that Randy will mention. So assumes an authorization in a 2020 timeframe, and then late in 2020, an issuance of about $100 million of bonds. So that's what's listed here. And then every four years, another authorization and another issuance of bonds that you see there, again, 103, 105, and 112 for total over, from 2020 to 2032, of $420 million. So we stacked this debt. We have the first issuance of bonds, again, late in 2020. So it comes online then for payments, starting in 2021. The levy rate then goes from this 3.85 up to a 4.94, which is a total increase of $1.09. Then in the first issuance, we create some notches for the purpose of then fitting in future debt and also trying to maintain a level levy rate based on the assessed value growth. So there again, we keep then the levy rate steady at 4.94, based on these assumptions.
It's a levy and bond combined.
Correct. Your EPNO plus the bond. Right. And then since we went out to 2032 in new issuance, then four years after that, we've created a new notch, just again, to basically continue the program every four years while maintaining a level levy rate. So that was kind of the goal in the structuring here. Try to increase the levy rate as little as we could and fit in the new debt that's listed down below. We can certainly come back to this, but I'll show you on the next slide. We also looked at, there we go. So this is obviously quite a busy chart, but what we wanted to look at in this was your statutory bond debt capacity. And so what that is, is you have the assessed value over here, which is growing at the growth rate that we discussed. So again, 6%, then 5, 4, and 3. We layer in your existing debt, plus the new bonds that we just showed on the previous page, and then look at what does that do to your remaining statutory debt capacity? And so I think the low point is at the first issuance, at around 28%, 29%. So that's the low point. You know, one thing we did actually take a look at was, going back to 2000, what's been the district's low point of debt capacity after an issuance? And it actually occurred, I think, after your 2007 bonds. And at that point, you had 6% of remaining capacity. So that's just, again, a comparison for where this is relative to where you were, again, 15 years ago.
While we have it up?
Yes.
I have a question.
Please.
That 6% or 5% that you're talking about, that's a combination between physical growth out there, we're building buildings, and the percent increase in kind of assessed value across the board?
Correct. Yep. Combination, a new construction.
In the past, and I like the equal levy plus bond rate, but in the past, people's taxes have stayed relatively constant from year to year because our assessed value goes up, like you're seeing there, and we're dropping dead off over time. So it's been pretty level. If we don't drop the bond and levy rate, and it stays constant, which is nice.
Right.
The average person's taxes are going to go up by a certain percent. It's not 6% because there's new growth out.
Right.
But it's somewhere between 0 and 6%. How much of that 6% is percentage in assessed value increased versus physical growth?
New growth. Yeah, so I don't have a breakdown of what the new growth has been, but I think we could get that from the assessor's office.
Because that would kind of give someone, people, an idea of how much their taxes are going to go up. If all of our assessed value was from physical buildings going up there, and the actual assessed value of your individual property was constant, then your taxes wouldn't go up at all. But if the majority of that 6% is overall increase in value, then your taxes could go up close to 6%.
Right.
So if you just know what that is for the average taxpayer.
I guess any other questions on either of the two slides? And we can certainly come back to it, but I think Randy has then the projects, or Susana has the projects. Okay.
Okay. So before I continue, I was remiss at the beginning in not introducing members of our Community Builders Group who are here this afternoon with us. Mr. Richard Jobs is here, and Mr. Nathan Grimm is here. The bond scenario timeline that Scott just reviewed with you reflects these projects at these different bond years. And these projects are a draft. They're just an example, hence why examples in real big letters there. And they, to a certain degree, they are listed in each bonding, bond year, based on prioritization of needs, using information that we reviewed. At your seat, you have some handouts. One handout looked like this, and it had this as the first page. And this page that says draft example is basically what you see on the screen, but sort of in a different format with the, with the total bond amount on the far right, but the project should match what's on the screen. Hopefully, they do. So it's just another way to look at that. And then the next page is a chart that shows our aging facilities, and, well, a list of all of our school facilities, the year they were built, when they were modernized or replaced, when they're eligible for replacement or modernization, and then the combined score in terms of condition and suitability. You also have a handout that looks like this. It's very colorful, and that provides you with specific data with respect to different areas of condition as reviewed by MGT Consulting for each of the schools. And then you also have, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Over on that final column, combined score, conditions, suitability, technology, and site, we're talking about, on this whole page, we're talking about rebuilding an aging facility. And to me, technology and the site don't have anything to do with that. Could we, and maybe we can discuss it later, board leadership, but if we're talking about when we rebuild it, it seems like it should be based on your building condition score and the suitability score.
Which is exactly why you have this one, so you see that number as well.
Right. But what's this total number when we combine and weighted average? Because I could go and replace computers at a school and up my overall score, but that shouldn't tell me when I should be prioritizing rebuilding.
So let me provide a little bit of historical context, and just a reminder for the board. Susana wasn't here during that time, so I just wanted to step in. On this sheet right here, it shows all of the common, or the columns. On the final column, it shows the combined score and the ratio by which each of those four columns was weighted, and you'll see 50, 30, 10, 10. That decision was a decision that was made by you as a board at that time, when you worked with Joe, with MGT. So should the board's interest be in changing the way each of those four columns, four columns are weighted? That would be a discussion and a decision that the five of you would need to make, because, again, that was made by consensus of the board at that time. So if we want to make a change to that, our district staff has no preference, but it would need to be worked through a consensus process with the board.
Scott, when we did all of this, they went into, I think it's been so long, that they went into all of the things that went into technology. And we realized that to make our learning equitable, we had to address the technology to a degree, which is why we weighted that 10%. So I think if we went back into this, I think we would probably get these scores similar up, or, you know, very similar to where they are.
And I agree, using this, if we're looking at equity in the overall picture of the school, but here, we're looking at when does it need to be replaced based on condition and suitability, I think. Because it doesn't seem like we should be able to, if we're talking about rebuilding a building, go in and up the technology score there and say, okay, now we don't need to.
I don't think this is about replacing computers. I think it's about the infrastructure. We have schools that simply don't have the infrastructure so that kids can adequately get on to computers and stay online. I think some of your kids have had to deal with some of those problems. So I don't think it's just what the technology is. I think it's the infrastructure and what it supports. So anyway, so that's combined score only has a 10% site score and a 10% technology score. And it does involve learning.
So to add to that, you also have a handout that looks like this, and it is the actual detailed data that was used to generate those scores for the school. And the example that I brought with me this evening is Livingston. And if you look on the last page, it shows the different areas of technology, what is titled "technology readiness" that was reviewed, and how then the subsequent score came out. The rest of the document includes the site condition, as well as educational suitability, et cetera. So it's just, you probably have already seen this before because it was work that MGT Consulting did, probably, I think it was fall or so of 2016 or spring of 2017. Anyway, so this just gives you a little bit more information as to how those scores are derived.
I think the information is very good. It's important to remember that this type of information does not make the decisions for us. This is a resource, a tool, and so when we talk about rebuilding schools, or spending money, or seeking bond money to change school, like on this scenario, we have, you know, rebuild Livingston, modernization of Markham. So those types of decisions, the board makes that decision. So this is just one resource. In no way does this dictate, well, you know, McGee's a 74, and Captain Gray's a 75, so McGee must have everything done before Captain Gray. There's so many other factors. This is just a resource that we can use. This doesn't dictate exactly what we do in the order because of the score.
Then the last handout that you received was one that looks like this. It was the one that was brought in later. What it provides you with is, we've been, we've been working to develop a way to be able to show you, the community, where and when we would be at brick and mortar capacity based on, you know, defined number of projects along a certain number of years. And the longer 11-by-17 document shows our elementary schools by what we are calling region, and their total brick and mortar capacity, and as well as the existing middle schools that fall in those regions. So it just gives you a picture of the total capacity for those schools in those general regional areas, West Pasco North, West Pasco South, Central, and East. Okay? The second, the second document is the additional capacity that these projects that are in this example would provide at the different bond years. Not exactly at the bond year, because it takes a couple of years for a school to be built, but there would be years where we would be addressing those, where we would be adding capacity in those specific locations. We will be putting this up against what enrollment projections look like out into beyond 2032. We just don't have the complete picture. We have an example, but because we don't have the two elementary schools yet defined in terms of number of students that would go there, because we're not, we haven't completed our boundary process, we just don't have those numbers. We do have an example that Kevin can share as to kind of how we're planning to do it. And what we would do is, at each of those years, we would look to see what our enrollment would be, and then compare that to, okay, where will we be at capacity in terms of the bond projects that are in this example? And then we would go through a process to really finalize what future bond projects would be that would give us the best opportunity for getting to brick and mortar capacity. So this is just a lot of information that you have in front of you. So given all this information, we just, we want you to have an opportunity to talk through kind of what you're thinking in terms of what a final long-term plan would consist of, and whether a project timeline like what we're sharing here today matches with your thinking as far as how far out we go for some initial bond scenarios, or do we go out further? And if the rationale that we're using in terms of addressing capacity, looking at enrollment projections, looking at our school conditions and all of that, if that makes sense to you as a board? And then have you provide us with some, any additional guidance so that the Community Builders Group can continue working to finalize what we share with you as a final product.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Reyes, for that information. So, board members, what we've got here is just a quick overview of where they've been and what they've done. And so I think this is our chance to kind of discuss, given this information, what does this long-term facilities plan look like for us? So they're going to take the information that we provide them and go back and come back with a long-term facilities plan. What we don't want is a bunch of back and forth several times trying to massage this. So if there's anything in particular that we are, that we as a board feel like we want in that long-term plan, long-range planning, then now's the time to, now's the time to bring it out.
So in essence, you know, you're kind of creating guiding principles like you did for the boundaries for the long-term facilities plan. And the broad question that we've asked, and I think that the Community Builders Group needs to hear from the board, is what conditions need to be in place for you to accept the long-term facilities plan recommendation? So if you have strong fillings around kind of bond cycle, tax rate, et cetera, et cetera, those conditions would be really helpful to have some consensus around, so we can inform that group. But that question kind of helped us as district staff kind of drill down into what we were looking for from you as a board. So what conditions need to be in place for you to accept the long-term facilities recommendation?
Yep.
I really like the, what is it? What do we have here? We only have 12, is it only 12 years out?
This example.
2020. Okay. And I think a lot, well, a lot of what I see is very needed. I hope, I would love to hear what my fellow board members have to think about $100 million bond every cycle. Does this include all of the state match?
Yes. These projects do reflect whatever state eligibility we would be accessing for the specific projects.
So a high school is more than 100, is more than $83 million to build, then?
Yes. The actual cost of that high school would be about $120 million, to give you an example. They're starting next year. Kennewich is building their high school. They're teaching what they call the lion's den, the gym, and their auditorium. And right now, there's $112 million for a 2,000-student high school. That's what this would be, would be a 2,000-student high school, then, but we would build it a year after. And so there's an additional cost of that, plus the extra for the given, uh... And so, there's an additional cost of that, plus the extra for the auditorium.
Okay.
To answer your question, yes, I'm okay with that. I think it's, I'm very impressed with all this information. I love it. I think it does something that we haven't had in a long time, which is really just laid out there for the board, the community, the district, that this is what we need. It's going to cost a lot of money. We are, we're still very behind. We just passed $100 million bond, $99 million, a couple of years ago. We're building those projects, they're going to be done soon, and we're still way behind. So, I love that it just puts it all out there, that this is what we need. We're not going to beat around the bush, or pass $40 million bonds, thinking that we're going to get there someday, because we're not. This is the reality. So I really like that. I think for me, that the important thing to remember is that if we, you know, we finalize a long-term facilities master plan, and say we adopt it in April, and next year, whoever's on the board, or when 2020, we would decide on the next bond, we have to recognize that we need to be flexible, and take into account new information, the culture, and what's going on in the community, and all those factors come into play. We can't, in 2028, pull this out and say, well, you know what? When we adopted our long-term facilities master plan, it said in 2028, we need an elementary school of 18, we need McGee, New and Lewin, and Innovative High School. That doesn't work. We have to be nimble and be able to modify it. It's, again, another resource, a tool. We're putting it out there that this is what we're projecting, but projections are always wrong. And so we have to be able to realize that these are, it's a resource, it's a tool, it's planning, but we have to be flexible to future needs. But I'm very impressed. I love, I love what I see. I love that we're getting it out there, what the need is, and what the cost is going to be. I love the projections, which we know are wrong. I did have one question about the bond, the years. We have 15-year bonds until the 2032 bond, and that was a 20-year term, and I was just curious why that was.
Yeah, I mean, it's really just a factor of how, you know, given the levy rate, how quickly I could pay off bonds. So, you know, I guess, again, when we get out there, does it actually be 15 years, or is it 16 or 17? I guess it'd remain to be seen. But again, my, my goal, I think, in structuring this, was to pay off the bonds as quickly as I could, and keep the levy rate increase as low as possible.
Yeah, and I think that's a good, I know we've done that in the past. In general, I'd be in favor of the shorter, that we, where we can save millions of dollars. Obviously, at the 20-year term, we're going to, they'll cost the community a lot more in interest, so I'd be in favor of saving money if it's, we can keep it at a reasonable rate, not necessarily exact, but without a reasonable increase.
So, lots of things on here. So, I, I like what Dr. Richardson said. This is laying it out there, and I think we've got to do that. We've got to be very clear in what we're putting out there. One thing I'm not seeing here, and I know we've seen it before, is projected enrollment at the certain years. We've got projected capacity, or our anticipated capacity, if we pass this, but am I not seeing the enrollment?
We have an example, like, Kevin has actually generated a projected enrollment framework, and we can share that, but it's not quite.
I'm not asking for that tonight necessarily, but I think it's critical that when we go out with this information, that we show people what progress we're making towards matching our capacity with our enrollment. And I think that needs to be very clear. If we want their support, then we have to show them that we are making progress. And so, I would expect, certainly we need some flexibility, but I believe, too, when we put together this plan, and my concern is that we, if we build in too much flexibility, then people begin to lose confidence that we really are doing what we said we're going to do. So, while I understand out 10 years, it's hard to project, but I would expect the next bond, at least the first bond, and probably the next bond, would be fairly fixed, because we're only looking out, well, hopefully, five, no more than six years on bond number two, if we do the four-year cycle. And then out beyond that, we could, we could be a little more flexible. I think we would expect that. But I would like to see in this plan that we were, that we always have the next two bonds, that are, they're always, we know what the next two bonds are going to be. This one and the next one, we know what they are. Because I think that's been our challenge before, is we've got to the point where, gosh, we've got to have more space. What do we do this time? And it's, we've not had any long-term, long-range planning. So I think that was one thing that's, that we need to be able to show out there, at least two bonds fairly certain, and even bonds three and four beyond that. So that would be one, one request I would make.
I agree with that request. I think, you know, like Steve said, bond one and two need to be, you know, fairly certain. I mean, I think we're gonna, we're, we're still going to be able to finesse this when we get a little closer to what we're actually going to put on. But it looks great, quite frankly, from this standpoint, and from what I understand to be the needs. But I think it's critical that we are always three bonds ahead. And, and I think that's kind of what Steve said, four is really nice. The third one doesn't have to be as nailed down, and the second one doesn't have to be, I mean, they all need to be progressively more nailed down. I mean, this 2021 is the one that we need to completely get nailed down. And the next one, I think the board needs to talk about, and kind of get a good plan, even though it can be finessed later. And then that third one is, is next. But I think we should always be able to go to the boarders with at least three bonds, like, at least three. And I think four is great, but at least three. And I love this, and I appreciate the work and the thoughtfulness. It coincides with a lot of the feelings I had. I would have loved to have had a high school and a middle school, and realized that's just too much all at once. And so, I appreciate how they, and really, five years, we can do this. I just, I think it's great. I think a lot of things are really good about it. And, and so I think with Steve, I agree with, let's do at least, you know, let's do at least three and four bonds out. I think that's important. Are we going to keep it around $100 million? Is that what we all feel? I would love to see 100, 100, and then a little bit going down. But how do you guys feel about the $100 million? Is everyone fine with that kind of being our guideline to the Community Builders?
Personally, I think if we can show them a plan that, I mean, we have capacity to go more than that. That's, historically, we've not done that, but we have the capacity to do that. And if we had a solid plan that showed that we were responsible with what we were doing, I think we could pass more than $100 million. But I think that's a great question. Any other board members want to weigh in on that? What do you think, Amy? Do you think we could do more than $100 million?
I, I think this first one is the one we could do more than $100 million, simply because of our big tax break that we have just recently had. I, I do, anyway, I think, too, that we need to make sure, anyway, that, I think we should give some kind of a, keep it within this amount. I think that's one of our guidelines that we should do, so we should figure that out as a board. I think we should also determine how frequently we want bonds, and I think we should determine that as a board. So this is four years. If we're all good with that, then let's, let's say, you know, four years for the next so often, whatever. And then, and so I think those two guidelines are important. And then I think the guideline of having, you know, one, two, and possibly three, pretty detailed and pretty specific are, are another thing that's important, to always have three on the board, even if three isn't. At least three, if not four or five. So, and so those are three guidelines I would like. I don't know what other guidelines you're looking for.
I'd like to see some kind of guideline. We're talking about capacity here, and some kind of trigger that tells us when we need to go reassess and use this tool. So we've had schools that have been 100% over this capacity for many years. And we're talking about adopting boundaries, that it's okay to be 25 or 30% over capacity at some schools. Now, I don't know if that's okay or not, but I guess I'd like to see some guidelines in here that say, when a school gets X percent over capacity, we should either start looking at redoing boundaries, or building a new school. Because right now, there's nothing in here. We've talked about, we want to put a, we've talked about how big our school should be, and we've said, oh, elementary schools at 600 to 700 kids. Well, that's bigger than the capacity that we already have at a lot of these schools. And when do we trigger either boundary discussions or reassessing, right? So we have one elementary school in the next 15 years, two middle schools, and one, and two more high schools. So, that sounds like a good plan right now, but when do we reassess? And what triggers that reassessment?
Hey, Scott, my question, too, is that that could, I think it's important that we, I love having something that triggers reassessment. I think that's really important. I love that idea. I think that we may need to make sure that we don't tie ourselves in to that trigger. After reading all of the comments about Livingston, the environment there, the culture there, what the community and what the teachers want at Livingston, I think we need to take into account that as well. They're used to this much over. They're used to this, and they like what has come because of it. So I think that it's important that we have a trigger that, that we don't necessarily have to act upon, if that makes any sense. So, just like what we're doing with Livingston, we're keeping it a little bit over capacity, because that's what the community wants. Well, it might already be triggered for smaller, but, anyway, I just think that we need to have a trigger, and then, and then the flexibility to act on that trigger or not.
And I would agree, and I think we want to have the flexibility, but I think we also need to be able to take into account, we did this with Angelo, where we may do it with Livingston, where we've said, what does the community want? And, and we get, is what the community wants what's best for the kids? Sometimes we, as board members, have to look at that. And there's many things that go into the comments that we get from the community, whether it be, parents love the environment at a given school and don't want to move. The principal loves their staff and don't want them to move. The staff loves their school, and they don't want to move. You know, whatever the reason is why the community wants it, I think we have to be careful as a board and say, okay, a community may want their school to be 100% over capacity with 15 portables there, but as a board, what triggers us to start looking at that? And again, I don't know the answer, and I don't even want to put names on the schools, but just in general, what triggers us in this plan to go look at that?
But I don't think that has anything to do with the long-range plan.
Right. I think we're going to have that discussion later tonight, but...
Because we said, what size should, I mean, in that long-range plan, we said, what size should schools be? And that was, that was on the first page of that.
But Scott, and in what I said, I think that that will totally cover that. I mean, I think we still have a discussion with Livingston, I shouldn't have brought that one up. But, but that long, that long-range plan, or having that trigger means the board is going to discuss it, and then the decisions that you're talking about, we can make. So I think having a trigger is a great thing, but leaving the leeway of, the board's still going to have a discussion over.
It's a trigger for discussion.
Yep.
So I think, I mean, I'm not sure we can go area by area. I mean, they've worked on that, but I think if we have elementary capacity, or if we have an elementary deficit, we're going to build an elementary school, and that's what we should be looking at. The boundaries comes separate from this, and the adjustment of boundaries to fill those schools. I mean, certainly, we would look where we'd need the capacity, but I don't want to get down, in this discussion, down into when, when do we need necessarily a school on the west side and east side? We'll look at those. We'll look at, when our elementary enrollment well exceeds our elementary capacity, we know we need an elementary school, and at that point, we'll look at where we need it, where it makes the most sense. But I, I think when we get into the boundary discussion, and as far as adjusting boundaries, what we've done historically is, when we build a school, add capacity. That's when we look at the boundaries. And I think we can look at, okay, so, east side, west side, central, wherever it is, we have, we have a need in this area, let's build a school here, and then we'll look at the...
That's fine, if you want to look at the groups, but what triggers it? When the group is 10% over, 20% over, 30%?
I think when it's over, period. I mean, right now, we haven't had that worry. We finally, we finally, with this new bond, with this new, new buildings, we'll have some schools under capacity. But I think the goal is to keep every school under capacity. So, that's why we're building buildings.
I think that's a discussion that we need to have as a board. I'm not, I am not at a position that thinks, okay, let's have, let's make the trigger over capacity. I think the trigger should be 10% over capacity. I mean...
Well, what, what trigger, though? For building a new school? Or, if we're talking boundaries, that's another discussion. This is...
Talk about the long-term.
I'm talking about the long-term plan.
Is Home Link still the priority in 2032? I don't know.
And I don't think, I don't think we should say this year. I think we need to be looking at 2028 right now. Okay, what schools are going to be 10% or 15% over capacity in 2028? That's when we really need to consider a bond, because I don't think our voters are, right now, they don't do anything until we're 30 to 50% over capacity. We need to get that down, because that's not okay. But I think we need to look out, in 2028, this school is going to be this much over capacity.
When you say this school, are you talking like high school versus middle school versus elementary school?
Elementary, our elementary schools are this much over capacity, we need a new one.
Okay.
And obviously forecasted, we don't know that, that it's forecasted.
Yeah. I worry about looking, trying to look at individual schools, because we can adjust boundaries. That's never a favorable thing to do, but, but we can look at by level, elementary schools are over capacity in general. We'll add up all of our capacity and all of our enrollment, we're over, okay. And if we want to put a number like that in that triggers, okay, when we're 10% over, I'd rather not wait till we're over capacity. I'd rather have our schools under capacity with room for growth, but at this point, that might be, might be unrealistic.
Do you think we can pass a bond with under, you know, hey, we're at capacity, and we're going to go over, so we better pass a bond right now, so we don't go over?
I don't know.
Okay.
I'd like to think that we are that good, but maybe we're not.
I would like to think we're that good, too.
But, but I think we have to look at it. We can potentially break it up geographically by area. This area is over capacity, therefore, we're going to build another school in this area. We might be at that point. But if we're looking at individual schools, I mean, an individual school would be part of a bigger group, because we can adjust boundaries by area. And I just, I don't want to get into, well, this school's over, so we're going to build a new school, when we might have others that are under. So I just...
And you're exactly right. If we have one school 15% over, the, all, all the rest are over capacity, or at capacity, I don't even think that should trigger a re-boundary. So I think that really makes sense. We need to go by areas. You know, we have an area of this many schools that are, you know, average 15% over. Well, then we know, and I, maybe that number happens when, when 15% of five schools is 500 to 700 kids. You know what I mean? So that's our trigger. You know, okay, we have enough to fill up a new school. What I would like to see, that I feel like the community would be more likely to support, is that we allow a little bit of flex. There's hardly a place in the west that has, or in Washington, that doesn't have some, you know, portables. I'm okay with some portables. I'm not okay with 200 portables. I'm okay with, okay, we're starting to get over in a few of these schools. We add a few poorer portables in preparation for, for a new bond, so that those portables can go away again. So, but I love that. I think you're exactly right. We don't want to do a specific school. We need to do areas. When we have this many schools, this far over capacity, that needs to trigger us looking at a new elementary school, or a middle, new middle school, or a new high school.
Yeah, I agree with the portable. You know, we have this, this broad vision of eventually having kids all in their own brick and mortar building, but the, some schools, the portables are the nicest rooms they have at the school, because the school's 30, 40, just said, Markham's what, like, almost 60 years old? So, if, when visiting the schools, some of the teachers, those are the nicest classrooms in the building, so they don't want to get rid of those yet, if, until maybe that school's rebuilt. So it's not as simple as just saying, well, now we suddenly have elementary capacity, so we get rid of all the portables and post them on Craigslist or something. I mean, I don't know what we can do to get, to get back some money from that.
Facebook Marketplace, I think.
Yeah, Facebook Marketplace. I don't know, I can't, don't keep up on that stuff. But again, it's not going to just happen overnight that suddenly we build two elementary schools, and now suddenly we don't need any portables. That's just not reality. We're going to need portables, we're still going to have portables for the next 12 years, I guarantee it. And we have, we're going to have portables at the middle schools, because our middle schools are going to be way overcrowded. I think we may be trying to make this more than it needs to be. I think we're making this way more complicated than it needs to be. I think just having something that's, you know, as it is even, like, we don't need to throw in all of these extra things. We really just need, I would like a comment maybe about the portables, but even just this information kind of put together, I think is sufficient. We don't need to come up with all these little details. And I personally think that the bond, we should not present this as like, here's our next three bonds, because I, each bond deserves its own evaluation when the time comes. So I'm sorry, I just think it's a mistake to say, well, here's the bond in 2024. The 2020 bond may not pass. There may be an economic downturn. We may have a change, a more dramatic change in assessed value than we expected. There may be damage to certain schools based on events. So I, to me, it's a mistake to say, oh, here's our next three bonds, when in five years, the board may be completely new, and things may be dramatically different in the community. You present this as, this is our plan. We've looked at it, here's what we're projecting, this is a plan, but each time, and this, I This is a plan. But each time, and this, I think this should be reevaluated, certainly every two years, you know, before each bond, and then it can be readjusted. So I, I think it's a mistake to, to present this as, well, here's our next three bonds, when none of us may be on the board in eight years.
I don't think anybody's, anybody's even implying that. We can't decide a bond eight years out. We can't. We can have a plan for that bond eight years out.
Right. Okay. Then maybe we agree. Maybe I misunderstood.
And when we get closer, I'm a planner. I'm a planner by nature. When I go on a trip, I plan everything to a T, because then I can make changes all along the way up to that date. And I have more freedom and I am able to see more and do more. And I think that's kind of what this is. We have a plan. We have a plan 12 years out and we make changes absolutely, just like you said.
Okay. I think we agree. Then I misunderstood, because I heard, I heard board members say, well, this is, these are our next two bonds, our next three bonds.
Well, I, I think we, so just in clarification, I think part of the challenge is, so we just ran a bond for middle school, right? So people, that was a big selling point for people. But it wasn't for everybody. But if people can see when the next thing that they want that's going to benefit their area, or I shouldn't, benefits probably not the right word, but that's going to solve a particular concern that they have, then they can, I think, can, are more likely to get behind it. So I think that's why we're doing this plan, is we want to see what's out there, two and three, and maybe even four bonds. And that kind of depends on the frequency. Is there a frequency that we can't live with? If they come back and say, we're going to run a bond in 2020 and we're going to run the next one in 2028, is that an issue? Or if a four year, is a four year frequency?
Can I, I don't mean to kind of disrupt the conversation, but I think the other piece that having multiple year bonds helps us do is to maximize state match, new and lieu dollars, et cetera. So I do think that that's another benefit of thinking more, more long term, certainly with understanding the need to be flexible as well.
Yeah. No, thank you.
So the duration thing is a good.
Yeah. Well, and that, and that, and I think that kind of feeds into the frequency too, because the more frequently we run bonds, the more frequently we can adjust our match money. So if we run one big bond, we just get the capacity that we have today and we wait till the next bond to get additional capacity. But I'm in favor of a four year frequency. I'm just wondering, is anybody else, is that going to be a?
I totally agree. Yeah, that, it's fine to present that as the plan, but obviously if something happened, the state is funding, maybe it becomes five and.
Totally understand. But, yeah. So bond size, is there a size? If they come back and say, you know what, we have capacity for a $200 million bond, is there a, is there an unacceptable size?
Well, I think that things are always changing. I mean, if we go for the 100, 101 or whatever that was, 100,000 or 100 million the first time, and then if things prove out.
I think that question I asked about what percent the taxes are going to go up would be part of the decision that I'd make, because a lot of people aren't getting more than a one or a 2% raise each year. And that, that barely covers the cost of living for everything else. So if we're going to say that, it depend, for me, it would depend on what that 6% assessed value, how much of that's going to trickle down to the increase in the individuals' taxes. I think we want to keep it at a couple percent total.
So I think that's a challenge, Scott, because, I mean, assessed values are going up, and they're going up a lot, lot bigger than most people's paychecks. So is the cost of construction. So that's the challenge we face. If we're going to modernize and construct new, modernize existing buildings, construct new buildings, that rate is necessarily going to go up some. And I agree, we don't want to, so the challenge is, and we've had this discussion before, do we want to keep a steady rate? And what we're showing up there with the $4 and whatever it is, that's a steady rate. So as your assessed value goes up, your overall tax bill goes up proportionally if we maintain a steady rate. Fortunately, or unfortunately, rate is the easiest way to compare. I mean, when we're talking about a way to compare taxes, rate is easy. People understand that. What, what is not so easy to understand is if we keep a steady rate and my house value keeps going up, my tax bill is going to keep going up as well. So, so it becomes a bit of a tricky balance.
So this, not to get.
If your individual assessed value goes up 20% in two years and it's, we have that, your, your tax bill is going to go 20%.
Not, not, no, not necessarily. This is, this is the thing. This is where we're getting into too much math, but that's not true, because the, it's the assessed value of our community. So even if my assessed value of my home went up $5,000, if our community added a bunch, my, my tax bill would not go up, because the, the bond is in a set amount. We say we're passing $100 million, we're going to collect that amount. If the community of Pasco, new buildings and houses go up, even if our, the value of our homes went up, our tax bill will go down, because, depending on the proportion of that. So it's not.
How much of that 6% is?
Right. So that's what I'm saying. So, right. And that's what I'm saying. So we can't say if your assessed value goes up, your tax bill, that's not true, because if Pasco adds a bunch of new businesses and a bunch of new houses, their portion, our portion of the $100 million will go down.
So that's, you're right, Aaron. So, but here's where the trick is. I mean, we can, we are making an estimate there of what the assessed value growth is. As long as the assessed value growth outstrips our estimate, or grows faster than our estimate, then our rate goes down. And.
Which it usually does. If, if you look at the last 10 years, the rate has gone down. So I just think we have to be careful when we're talking about projections and then saying absolute statements that, because that's not true.
Well, then that's why I say it's a little bit tricky, because rate is easy to, it's an easy comparison, because everybody understands rate. But it's a little bit tricky too, because there's a balance.
In the nine years since that we have lived in our home, our taxes have gone up twice. And they have gone down or stayed relatively normal the rest of the time. I mean, this next year, I know they're going to go down. But I know that because escrow's asking for more money, because taxes have increased. That happened twice. So that, I'm sure that's not the same everywhere, because some places increase in value more than others. But, but you're right. We don't know if this is going to increase taxes, or if we're going to stay relatively the same. Because with all the bonds and things that we've passed, my house probably should have gone up in taxes more than twice.
Yeah. No, I mean, so the, anyways, a lot of this is messaging. We're getting into the, but that's, we just have to be careful what we present to the community. Like, again, I don't think it's right to, to promise things. If, if people in 2020 would say, well, the next bond will have the middle school. Well, not, we shouldn't make that statement. You can say that we are planning that the next bond will, but we shouldn't say things like, well, you'll get the middle school with the next bond, because that's not necessarily true. You, us saying that, we may not decide that.
See, and this is where I'm not sure I agree with that. I think we need to.
That's fine. That's my, that's my take on it. So we, I think it's a mistake.
Certainly something could happen, but we need to be 95% sure on that next bond, I think.
I think it's fine to, to plan for that, but we just have to be careful with the wording. So.
And I think we need to be 80% sure. So I think what we should put on there is, this is tentative, or this is what we.
It's a plan.
That's the plan.
This is a limit.
Facilities plan. We don't present it as, this is the next bond we're running for sure in 2024.
Well, I think we, right. Yeah. I think that's fair enough. All right. So, anything else? Anybody wants to throw out there that would be, so Mr. Hebden has?
Yes. And just one thought, the key mine hasn't, hasn't come up, is that the Community Builder Group talked about working with Randy and the timeframe for what, what do we have capacity to build at one time? So just wanted to be aware that we were thoughtful in putting this together and considering the capacity to be able to build the buildings and manage those construction projects.
Okay.
Do you have more?
I don't know if there's any more discussion. I do have, I wanted to give you an opportunity to kind of have the conversation and maybe think about some of the potential guidelines that you would, that mean something to you as a board, within the context of Pasco School District. But I also did do a little bit of research and checked into a few other districts' plans about regarding guiding principles that they may have come up with. And some of the ones that come up more often than not are, of course, engaging the community, but also building to meet capacity needs, considering district goals, which obviously we have five outrageous outcomes. Standardizing school design for each level, and I think to some degree, we have a little bit of that in place, and we could certainly fine tune that. Standardized educational and design specifications, including materials and equipment. Prioritizing needs, or that's a guiding principle, which we're already sort of engaged in. And then performing a broad analysis of projected growth and development to align with future building sites. So I think some of these that are the most common ones that I came across, we're already doing, and then you added a few of your own.
So I think, again, one thing I would like to see is at each bond, how much capacity we anticipate adding, and what our projected enrollment is at every, at every step. I think if I don't see that, I would have a hard time supporting you. But I'm expecting you will.
Oh, yeah. We certainly will. We're almost there. But this, this handout does provide you with a picture of what the expected additional capacity. And so we would match up, we would line up the projected enrollment accordingly.
I mean, I think we already have that data. I really think this, from my perspective, we don't need a lot more work. I think the district, everyone that's participated has done fantastic. From my perspective, but we already have that data. It's been presented to us recently. So you can, you throw that together and put it in and fine tune it, but I don't think it needs a lot of additional work.
Right. I'm not, just bring it together so we can see it.
We're like super close. Anyway, so basically, our next steps are to take what you gave to us today and make sure that we have listed out what we believe to be guiding principles from, from your viewpoint. Align our, this draft project timeline to enrollment projections, capacity, and the suitability study, which we're doing. And then presenting this to you as a, as a final project. We were thinking in February, that would be next week. I think I would like to reconvene the Community Builders Group prior to that, so we may bring the, the project back to you, or the plan back to you, maybe first meeting or so in March. And then schedule a recommendation for you to take action on the plan.
And one thing too, we talked about $100 million bond. I don't think all of the bonds need to. I think we need to think about, okay, this one's $100 million, and add a percent and a half every year, and try to keep it within that, or 2%, or something. But we need to give a way to allow them to grow with the costs of building. So I think that's important as well. I don't want you to go back and say, oh, we can only do $100 million bonds 15 years out.
And we had one other person join us this evening. Brent Kubalik is here, and he is one of our Community Builder Group members as well. So welcome, Brent. I didn't catch you earlier. Oh, and we have Christie. Oh, no, Christie's on the other committee.
So I'm guessing, Mr. Grimm, you have a comment?
I'm a member of the Community Builders Group, and this is something that we discussed at length. You can either decide as a board to make a commitment to the community of having a rate, and then the timing and the amounts fall out, or you can discuss having timing and amount caps. So if you don't want to get too far into the weeds, go back to just discussing, we want to make a commitment that we will have a rate associated with construction bonds of X on top of whatever the lending is. And then, as the timing logically falls out, because you can only collect so much money. So then you don't have to argue as four years the right duration, the six years the right duration, is 100 million the right number. You make a commitment that we, that your rate, tax rate or bond service won't go over X. I think that's more important discussion. Because then that, you can run the model, says how much can you collect? Then you can look at your project and say, hey, we can build these projects here, 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 again.
So you guys have had that discussion. I, I don't want to get in a personal discussion between Mr. Grimm and myself, but, but, so you guys have had that discussion in your Community Builders Group. Have you, and not to put you on the spot, this can be a yes or no answer. Have you thought about a rate and kind of honed in on a rate? I'm not asking for that.
We're just looking for the board to guide us.
Okay.
That would be my response.
Okay.
So if you did not want to consider what you're comfortable in terms of timing and ultimate caps, you could instead consider.
You know what?
Aaron, you have something you want to say?
I personally am not in favor of that. I don't know what the discussion was, but I think that's much more difficult to plan for. So with that as a goal, and where, what would the number be? I think that's very difficult to pin down. And to me, that gets away from, what's the priority for us as a district and a board? Are we here to provide what our students, the students in our community need? Or is our underlying foundational goal to keep a bond and levy rate at a certain number? See, that, to me, that's, I much would, I would much rather say to the community, here are our needs. They, our district administrator, they've looked at the capacity, they've looked at what we can get. We're trying to maximize funds with these projects. But to say, well, we will not go above a 395 rate, and if, even though we desperately need a high school, the rate's going to be 412, so we just can't do it. I just don't think that's the right approach. I think it's, I think the way that they've done it, and I guess I'm assuming ultimately decided the majority, or that with this approach, I think is the right approach. And the, the long-term facilities plans that I've seen, that's the approach they take. I think it'd be very hard for a district to say, well, we're just going to keep our rate at 457 or as close to that as possible, and let things fall where they may with that rate.
So I, I'm not sure how to articulate that, this. I, I don't necessarily disagree, but I don't necessarily agree with that. I think, and this is where it gets back to, when we talk about comparing bonds year to year, rate is the easiest way to do that? Because it really gets difficult when you start saying, well, your tax bill isn't going to go up, without saying, well, how do you know that? I mean, and, and again, rate is not perfect, because our rates have always gone down, because we've under, we've always estimated low on the growth of assessed value, which we do on purpose. We certainly wouldn't want to overestimate that and then have our, have it go the other way. So I think, and this is where it gets into, you know, and Mr. Grimm was talking about, you can, you can pick a timing and a dollar amount, or you can level the rate. And those all balance out somewhere in the equation. So I think it's, the, the easy way is to say, this is what we're going to keep our bond rate at. Now, we're not, we're not perfect at predicting assessed value growth. So that's where you get, that's where it gets tricky. But as was shown in that one slide, if we, I mean, that's how we compare it, is we try and level the bond rate over the, over a period of time. And so it.
Right. So I, I think we've done that in a, in a general sense. So are we wanting something more specific as a board than that? If we look at the scenario that was presented to us, we have tried to do that. And historically, the district and boards have tried to do that as much as possible.
And I think that's.
And I think we all agree with that. So are we, are we wanting to do something even more specific, or lock us in even more than that? Because to me, we've already, we are doing that.
Okay.
As much as I'm comfortable doing. If, if anyone is more comfortable being more specific than our, the financial planners have presented, I'd love to hear it.
You know, I, I like the idea of going with the community and saying, we will, you know, this is what we're going to try to keep the rate at, but we're not going over this. So that they know this is what our goal is, but like, if we get less funding from the state and we need to raise our levy 25 cents, I, I think we need to give ourselves this. But as a voter, I like the idea of, this is what we're trying to keep the rate at, but we won't go over this. And, but I think we can do that and still have a four year cycle.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
So, because I think sometimes we need to be careful about, if we're going to sell this bond, I think that might be a really good selling point.
Yeah. And just, we have to be careful making promises, right? We have to be careful saying, it's not going to go over a specific number.
That's why we say, we're trying for this.
Yeah, I agree. So I think it's fine. I think we've always done that, and I think that's a good approach. You just don't want to make too specific of a promise.
Well, and, yeah, yeah.
And from this, it looks like we could say, you know, we're going to try to keep the rate at, I don't know, $4, whatever.
Less than $5.
But, but the cap will be 510, you know? Give ourselves a little if we need. But we're not going to, and, and be very clear, we were paying in 2018, 595. We're not going to get, you know, we're keeping this under that. So we're not going to, so, but that would be comforting to me as a voter. So I don't know. I, I'm not opposed to that. I think that's a good idea.
That we'll never approach that number.
Well, I, yeah, I don't think we make any promises that we won't go over, but this is our target. This is, if we can keep our rate, and again, this is all based on projections, they're not 100% accurate. If our target, if we target this rate, we predict that by this year, we will have matched the capacity of our schools to the enrollment of our schools.
So that's a great way to put it.
Yeah. No, I think that, so are we, are we saying, do we want them to do something additional? Again, because I, to me, they already have done that, and I'm comfortable with how they've done it.
Right. No, I think this is, you know, these numbers show us a rate based on our projections on assessed value growth. And so I, I think that's as good as we can get. And, and I'm confident we're low on our assessed value growth, so we shouldn't, the rate shouldn't go up. But there's always risk there.